Forum has been established. This is now 6:30, 4:00 PM. Let's call to begin the order. Call to roll, please.
Mr. Brulee. Mrs. Escalante, here. Mrs. Jarrett, here. Dr. McFadden, here. Mr. Monk. Mr. Rickman. Mrs. Walker, here.
Forum has been established. Roll call. Let me, uh, pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item four. This is a portion of our meeting where we indulge and invite citizens to state their comments. At this time in the meeting, if there's any citizens who would like to make a comment, please address your comments to the Chair of the Board. Please limit yourself for three minutes. Please state your name and address. Citizen comments.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kristi Nickel. As you know, my famous tagline, I live at 155 Cass Avenue, chemistry lab 232 upstairs. I just want to put a shout out to the interim principal right now in the high school. For the first time in one, two, three principals, I'm actually cleaning out our chem lab and disposing of some much necessary, much needed things that need to be disposed of properly. She's been the first one to really spearhead this with me, and I'm really excited that she's done it. And I think she really helped kind of calm the waves, calm the ship, and got us through the end of the year. So I think she did a really good job coming into the difficult situation that she came into, to no fault of her own. And she, she did a good job closing out the year for the teachers, at least from my perspective and several other teachers in the building. So I want to just let the Board know that she's done a really good job. I'm really bummed she won't stay. And, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Citizens' comments. Citizen comments. Citizen comments. Last call for citizen comments. Given enough adequate time, seeing there's being none, we should move the agenda to item number five. This meeting is talking about the public hearing on proposed budget for the 2019-2020 and 2019 tax rate. The Superintendent.
Thank you.
Sir? Yes, Superintendent. I'm on the wrong agenda. Got you.
That's all right, Mr. Monk. Got you. First, I'd like to say Joey Metz is ill this evening, and we have Ms. Mary Jinkin sitting in for her as the Board Secretary tonight. So I'd like to say thank you so much for being available to help us out this evening. And hopefully Joey will be well soon. Anyways, tonight's hearing, the 6:30 meeting, is for the public hearing concerning the tax levy for the 2019-2020 school year. And we are required by law to have a public hearing before taxes are levied. And I'd like to discuss that at this time. And afterwards, if anyone, a citizen would like to comment concerning the public hearing, that would be a time also after the discussion of the debt levy. For next year, we, the Board will be looking at the, for the regular meeting in a few minutes, looking at the operating budget, final budget for the 2019, and then the new budget for the 2020 school year concerning operating food service and our debt service. And for the operating, there are 18 mills levied for the general fund, and that's how we get part of our state aid money. We are supposed to levy, every school district is supposed to levy 18 mills locally. And after that calculation, the state looks to see what the balance is that they owe. So whether the 18 mills are levied or not, the state will only pay the amount, the difference of what you should be able to raise locally. And I'm thankful that the school district is allowed to levy the whole 18 mills. So that will be part of our budget for next year of revenues. And also with our debt millage, we owe on our debt, our bonds that were levied, they were passed several years ago. And in order to pay that debt off, we have to levy millages on that. Last year, the district levied 11.8 mills, and the same thing will occur this year. We're pleased to announce that we won't have to have an increase in the tax levy. So we will be levying the 11.8 mills, and that is collected as a summer tax, as opposed to summer and winter, as some districts do. But we only collect in the summer. And so 11.8 mills will be levied on all properties for the coming school year to meet our debt fund. And also, the 18 mills will be levied on, only on the non-homestead properties to complete our state aid. And that is all that I have for now. So if anyone has any questions concerning the millages for the operating or on the debt, I can entertain those at this time. Just want to say too, with the debt, we will be able to raise $3.6 million this coming school year to meet the debt. And, and that is from Mount Clemens and from Clinton Township is 1.7 mills, I mean, million that we will be able to raise on all properties in that community. And then for the non-homestead in Clinton Township is 1.1 million raised. And in Mount Clemens is 2 point, almost 2.7 million that we will raise to meet our operating mills. And we are also required to advertise this in the paper, and that was an article in the paper on Sunday announcing the public hearing concerning the debt mills.
This is a public hearing, so citizens that actually want to make a question or have a question, they more than welcome to answer it. Just address the Board and identify yourself. You're limited to three minutes. Any questions from my fellow Board members on what was just presented? No? Pretty crystal, pretty clear?
And as it will be pointed out later on in the regular meeting, we did discuss this at our business meeting.
So all three items, A, B, and C, has been discussed and presented. I'm just waiting to see if there's any citizens that have any questions. What was addressed by the Superintendent? Anything related to the budget, the debt, the bills, the levies, anything of that? I've seen none. Still want to give just a couple more minutes because it's still pretty early in the meeting right now. So if somebody comes in late, I want to make sure they have the opportunity to ask those questions. So next year's budget, Madam Superintendent, according to this here beginning fund balance would be 128.
Yes, that is how, what we ended the school year last year was at 128. So with the proposed final budget for this year, we would expect it to end the school year at just over $400,000 to the debt.
To the deficit.
This will be the first year that we do not have a deficit. So, and that is great kudos to our staff because they have made several sacrifices throughout the years. It's been almost 10 years that this district, well over 10 years, that the district has been in the red. And a lot of sacrifices from our teaching staff. And a lot of heartache at the same time. So I don't want to make light of that, knowing that the teaching staff of this district has stuck by the administration to get through this. And so I definitely want to make sure that I say thank you to each and every one over the years that have, and I know they've had to make some difficult decisions as well going through this process because it has not been easy. We've had to reduce programs, reduce just about our students. A lot of community members left, decided to put their kids in other districts. And we understand that because, but there's a solid core of community members that have stuck by this district through all of the hardship that they have encountered. So thank you to the community. Thank you so much to the staff, the teaching, and all the support staff as well because they've had, have been a part of this. So the teachers make the largest sacrifice. But at the same time, we know that every person in this district has sacrificed to make sure that this district comes out of the red and we get from under Treasury and the State of Michigan. So we are going to see this through, and I'm sure this Treasury will still watch us for a couple more years just to make sure that it's real. But I am pleased to say that that is what we're looking forward to this year. Having a black line as opposed to a red. So thank you for your sacrifice.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. This is the public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate. There's no actions that need to be taken. It's going to be in a regular meeting. I'm going to move, make a, let's see, we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Walker. Support by Ms. Jarrett. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Seeing there being none, call to roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
That's okay, Ms. Walker gets two votes. That's all right. Motion carried. Being adjourned, special public hearing adjourned. We move on to the general meeting, the regular board meeting, starting at 6:46 PM. Call to order. Call to roll, please.
Ms. Escalante?
Here.
Ms. Jarrett?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Forum been established. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the regular meeting portion, item number four, where we address citizens' comments, where citizens have the opportunity to come up to the mic, address the Chair of the Board. Please address your name and address, and state your name and address, and keep it to three minutes. Please address the Chair of the Board when you do so. Citizens' comments.
Good evening. I'm Mary Campbell. I'm the Mount Clemens Education Association President. And today I had the honor and the ability to go up to the State Department and stand on the Capitol's lawn and ask for additional funding and for the budget to be passed so that our district would be one of the districts that as many districts deserving more funding at the state level. And as I was chanting, along with thousands, the release of 1,000 other educators, part of the things that they were talking about was respecting educators. And last week, at the fifth grade graduation, there was an incident where some words were spoken to the fifth grade parents that upset a number of your staff. And it wasn't just teaching staff. It was also your kitchen staff, your custodial staff, your secretarial staff, all the staff that was present. And then, of course, like wildfire words would spread throughout the district. So the teachers, as Mrs. Davis had spoken today, have done a lot of sacrifice as the other employees of this district. The words that were spoken offended people. I had teachers tell me that one of them even left crying because the words were upsetting to them that were spoken. So I would hope that you can address the words and find out the situation. And I'm not, obviously, at this forum, going to go into details, but I would like you to speak to that situation for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comments?
I also, Mary Campbell, Mount Clemens, the President, looking through the minutes from last month, I noticed that one of the teachers, a seminal teacher who was voted by their staff as a Teacher of the Year was not recognized in your minutes. I'm hoping, I was not able to be here last week or last month. I'm hoping that Cynthia Ikorz, who's the art teacher there, who has done numerous projects, not only for that school, but also last year during the summer camp, she came and helped with the ACES program a great deal. She is someone who's well deserved the recognition as Teacher of the Year. So I'm hoping that may have just been an oversight in the minutes, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Are there any additional citizen comments? Are there any additional citizen comments? Seeing adequate time has been allowed, and seeing there being none, we should move to action item number five, approval of minutes. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Jarrett. Second by Ms. Walker. Any questions or comments about the motion on the floor? Madam Superintendent, about that teacher recognition thing.
We've got to fix that.
There was. I actually, I remember that.
I remember. I believe she was recognized.
Yeah, we gave her a certificate.
That's right.
It just wasn't in the minutes.
And then I have, I looked at my comments, and it says, "I congratulate Teacher of the Year." I think several of you of the Board did too.
Okay, okay. So I know there's a motion on the floor to approve it, but Mr. Monk, go ahead, please.
We've been having some issues with our minutes lately. More than just a few. Are we making sure that we're checking, looking over the minutes for accuracy? Maybe viewing the tape? If, if, if we're in question about anything to make sure that we have all accurate information? Because this is part of our record going forward with the state. So I would encourage that we look these over very carefully and have these minutes accurate as we go forward in approving these minutes on a month-to-month basis.
So those need to be, probably be addressed, added to the minutes for sure. Do we want to send these minutes back for a review? Or do you want to go ahead and just approve these minutes? You know what, Madam Superintendent? Just have them look over these minutes. We want to approve these minutes tonight, but make sure that portion is added for Ms. Campbell, Mr. Monk.
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Yes.
amend the minutes.
Yes.
To add that part in there for accuracy.
And I'll second that. Amendment, motion to amend the minutes. We'll have to make a roll call for that. So call to roll, please, on that.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carried. So that motion was basically Mr. Monk making a motion to amend the, the minutes. They had the portion of the instructor, Ms. Ikorz, that was not in the minutes that has passed. Now we're going to go back to the original motion of approving the minutes with the amendment that's already added to it. Call to roll, please.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Let's move on to action item number six, bills for payment. Anybody from the Business Committee here? Ms. Walker? Anything about these bills for payment? Want to make a motion on this or not?
I move we accept them as presented.
Is there a second?
Support.
Support. Moved by Ms. Walker. Second by Ms. Escalante. Any questions or comments about these bills for payment or this motion on the floor? Yes, Ms. Walker.
We did go over all of these in the business meeting and found everything to be in order.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing there being none, call to roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item seven, proposed official year 2018-2019 final budget amendment. Ms. Walker, was this also presented at the Business Committee?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And we found everything to be in order, wonderfully in order.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to accept this or pass it or anything like that? I mean, there's a motion? This is an action item. We've got to approve this.
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Escalante. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker. Any other additional comments or questions about this motion on the floor? Final budget amendment is very important because we can't operate our school just without a budget. We're not going to be led, we're not going to have to blind lead the blind. So I'm glad we've got the lights up front, and we can go forward. So since that is what it is, the proposed final budget for 2018-2019, no additional comments or questions? Call to roll, please.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carried and passed. Action item number eight. Now this is a proposed official year 2019-2020 budget. Let's get the motion on the floor first. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the budget for the 2019-2020.
Moved by Ms. Jarrett. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker. Is there any questions or comments about this proposed budget for official year 2019-2020? Yes, Ms. Superintendent?
Okay. I thank you. Yes, that's, which I spoke in the public hearing. Our full 18 mills will be levied this year for general operations. And this budget does assume that a loss of 100 students. And it is much better to plan for the worst and, but have the best. So we're making this precautionary move in the event we do have, because every year we at least budget for 50 student loss. And this year, we were budgeting for 100 student loss. So that's what this budget takes into account, which is a little over $800,000 less in revenue. And likewise, it reflects right around that amount, was it almost $875,000 less in rep and expenditures, which takes into account our grants as well. So being responsible and making sure that we don't have a deficit at the end of the year for next year, we would have a healthy fund balance. But we're also looking at, even if we did nothing, if we made sure that we kept our expenditures lined up where they are right now, we could still end the year in a positive. So we're looking at both the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario for us. Because again, with all the sacrifices that have been made in the past, we'll be able to carry out the business for next year. I just want to make sure everyone understands that, that even though we're showing a decent fund balance, if we really did lose 100 students, we could continue as we are right now and keep things running appropriately.
Mr. Monk?
Okay. You mentioned worst-case and best-case scenario. I think worst-case scenario, we lose 100 kids. What does our district look like as far as personnel? I mean, obviously, we don't have 100 kids in, inside the classrooms. So what does the district look like going forward if we lose 100 kids?
That's what I was just speaking to, that if we did lose 100 kids, that would be a little over $800,000 less in revenue. And because of the way we've been diligent with our spending, if we did nothing other than laid off no personnel, we would still be okay for the next school year.
So you're saying even if we do lose 100 kids, we would not have to lay off any personnel?
Yes.
We might have to lay off some personnel.
We might. But our best case, if we did not, we would be okay.
Right. That's best-case scenario if we did not. But worst-case scenario, if we do lose 100 kids, there's a possibility.
There's, yes, there's a possibility.
Have we made, have we made contingent plans for that possibility?
That's what this budget shows.
So what kind of?
So this budget shows 800.
So what kind of money, as far as our budget, ending our budget, what kind of money are we looking at? Obviously, we're looking at a, what did you say, a 400-some thousand surplus?
Yes, if you look in that very, that right column.
Yeah.
Look down at the very bottom.
So if we lose those 100 kids, what kind of surplus are we looking at?
We would, we could end up with just 100.
And I'm asking these questions just for the public, you know, so they know what's happening. So, yeah.
And if we did nothing, we could have a surplus of a black line of a little over $100,000 in the budget.
All right. That's kind of what I, you know, so.
Yes.
Worst-case scenario, if, if, if we lose 100 kids, we're still in the black. Not as much to the tune of lesser of a $300,000 instead of the, in best-case scenario, we'll hit the $400,000 mark.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we would, we'll make a couple of adjustments in a few other places other than personnel as much as we could.
Okay.
So, but the goal would be to leave staff the way it is right now.
Yeah. I would definitely encourage us to not bother staff at all, if possible.
Right. Because we also have to look at the increase of the cost for healthcare. And also look at the increase in our, our retirement rate. So we would look at all of those things. And so our first adjustment, we will have to take care of that. And any insurance increases. So we'll have to take care of that. So we'll look and see if there are some other places that we could hit before we touch personnel. So that's why I was saying, if we'll try to leave things at the status quo as much as possible so that we don't have to touch personnel.
Okay.
But the budget before you is the worst-case scenario.
Okay.
And thank you for making sure everyone could understand.
Right, right.
So that would be the general fund. And for the food service, we would, there's a little up in costs there because we are looking to have a chef in the district next year. And, but we will still end up in the black. So it is showing that we would use some of our fund equity.
Now, hiring a chef, is that something that's required by the state? Or that's just something for?
Required by Mount Clemens. Because we have been listening to our students and the parents, and we want to make sure that we have different choices, healthier choices for students. And.
I'm asking that question for a couple reasons. Is this chef going to be just for the food service? Is this chef gonna be just for food service or are we trying to look at a home economic type of program where he's giving an instructional class or he's just under food service portion?
It's just for food service, yes.
Oh, that's too bad, that's a good idea, though.
I thought I'd throw it against the wall.
Okay.
The ideal, the, yes, the i- The ideal situation, you know, um, with the, um, and I think that's one of the contracts that are up for renewal.
Yes.
Um, and I do remember the one company that came in and did the presentation. Um, I was thoroughly impressed. Um, of course, you know, this is my background being forty years in restaurant experience. And a lot of people don't think that the food, the type of food that we feed our children don't make a difference, it does.
Yes.
Um, I know if I can come in and I can get some chicken gumbo, then I can go to class, I'm gonna ace my math test.
That's right.
But if I get some pork and beans and hot dogs, I might not make that A in that in my test, that's just me, I'm not saying anybody else. But I know when I put good things in me, good things will come out. So, I will stop preaching right now.
What?
Well, I like that. I ain't got forty years of restaurant service, but I got like forty some years of eating.
There you go.
And I was talking, and you see, I, I need individuals like you, I'm saying.
But the plan, uh, what, because we do have a foods, what we call a foods class right now.
Right.
And the students do, um, make different dishes, they have different recipes, uh, every week, I think they cook twice a week. And, uh, they do let the students and staff sample, uh, their creations. So, they've come up with some really interesting foods and, and delicious foods. So, uh, we're pleased to say that the students do like that, um, program, well, that class. And so, we do plan to do that, um, this year coming. And also, as we were talking with the two companies that, um, did bid and those bids are due Friday at two o'clock, um, but with talking with those, uh, two, uh, service providers, they did say that with the chef, they would definitely want to, um, have different cut demonstrations in the, um, cafeteria and also have different events in the evening to bring parents and students back, where they would actually cook the food and take it home. And, uh, or at least take the ingredients home, but they would cook the food here, eat it, and then have those same ingredients to take home. So, we're excited, um, at the possibilities of having a chef in the district. Well, it is a requirement in the bid, so we will definitely have a chef.
Well, that's, that's good, um, I got one more comment on that one, but is this gonna change anything with the contract we have now with Chart Wells?
Yes, everything's gonna change because this is a new bid.
New bid.
So, that bid is out the door, that this is our last, um, year on that one. So, either way, it would change because it would be a new contract in place.
Okay, do we get a lot more people to, um, bid for this or that's something that's still-
We just had, no, we had two bidders.
Two bidders, okay.
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, for, um, baths, well, bathing babble, be nice for me, look at my YouTube video and see Cooking with Chef. I'm one of the bathing baths, uh, channel, so we'll see what happens.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's one of the, you know, you know, just for reference, um, I am also an executive chef. And executive chefs are mandated and also certified state and federal. So, all of our kids are not gonna go to college. So, I look at it as an opportunity, as this is another, um, program, um, that maybe some of my kids will get into and get into the culinary arts.
Yes.
Going forward, they can come out of high school with some type of culinary arts certificate. And being in, and being from the restaurant field, you got a culinary arts certificate, you not only have one foot in the door, you have both foots in the door. And you are probably one hundred percent likely to get hired as a management, not an employee. Um, and that's what a lot of the, um, mid-scale, um, high-scale restaurants, um, that we have that are going up tremendously on M59. There's a lot of restaurants going up on M59. So, um, I would love for us to be part of some type of feeder program to those restaurants going forward and get our young people, um, educated and also employed.
I just, uh, to make a note that the past four years, Chart Wells has offered a scholarship to any student wanting to go into, um, hospitality. So, thus far, we haven't had one, but we haven't given up, um, you know, having money set aside for a student that is interested in culinary arts or in hospitality period. And part of Pankow, students can, uh, attend those, those programs over there for culinary arts as well.
So, is that scholarship already closed? I'm pretty sure my daughter will go on hospitality or culinary arts. Leaf, leaf for a semester, I don't know. But, okay, we'll talk about it. Is there anything else about this, uh, motion that's on the floor that we need to discuss? No? Okay, Mr. Monk made some very good points and, um, um, I know Superintendent heard that, wrote it down, and hopefully we have that coming up in the future, except for my culinary classes and things like that, but let's worry about the chef first.
Yes.
And let's get things steamrolling from there. So, since there be no other questions or comments about this motion on the floor, let's call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion pass, motion carry, let's move on to item number nine, approve state aid note.
Okay, thank you. We also-
Recommendation action approved, annual state aid note borrowing. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve it as presented.
Ms. Walker moves to approve it, is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Escalante. Questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
Okay, now, thank you. Um, with this, uh, we do borrow money from, I guess, our state aid, and that's why it's called a state aid note. Um, and it is for cash flow purposes, um, since we, um, have been in deficit, uh, we don't have enough cash in the bank, um, at this time to meet all of our needs. So, we borrow against our state aid, uh, because we get one eleventh of the money each month starting in October. So, um, districts in our position, um, borrow against that state aid from the state. And it's an application process that you have to go through that the board, um, is required to approve for the, uh, coming year. And so, the calculations that you have in front of you is, um, for cash flow purposes, and we're, uh, requesting one point, almost one point four million of, um, debt from the state. And that will be paid out at the end of, I believe it's, um, the end of, um, August with this August state aid payment. So, this is presented, um, to you with the calculations and, um, how we came up with, um, that amount. Um, and all of these forms are from the state, and there is a, um, resolution, uh, for the board, uh, for approval on the state aid. And we have done this probably every year that we've, uh, been in deficit, so, um, this is just part of our normal business for Mount Clemens.
And even when we get to the point where we might be out of deficit, it's not bad or a terrible thing to ask for the state aid just in case.
Right, and at that time, um, the state will look at where you are financially. And it's much easier for districts that are in, um, in a deficit to get them, um, money. But there are occasions where they will allow the districts, especially just coming out, to get their feedback on the ground, uh, to borrow.
And all this basically is, is you borrowing your, um, your budget expenses before the end of the year.
Yes.
That's where you can pay your bills, and at the end of the year, you pay a, a small percentage back to the state for making that happen.
Right, well, actually, they collect all of it back, um, you can pay it back in three installments, five or seven. And generally, we pay it back in five. So, they just deduct it from our state aid because they've given it to you upfront.
Yeah.
That's how that works.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, all of this is?
Yes, all, yes, that's the resolution.
Oh.
Which doesn't have to be read in detail, it's, um, just as long as we make the motion and it's, um, approved, we will record that and send it to our legal counsel, and they will submit this to the state.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing there being none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion pass. Item number ten, appointees for cable commission.
Okay. Want me to make the?
Uh, um, first of all, do we need to make a motion on these names here? Yes, names are in there.
Yes, it's, we have three appointees.
Okay. We gotta do, it's two, right?
It would be three.
Three names?
The board is, um, required to, would you wanna talk about it? Patrick?
So, do we make a motion first or?
Let's make a motion on the three individuals that has applied for the cable commission, then we can discuss it and talk about it then, all right?
I make a motion to approve the, um, members, these applications.
I second that. Ms. Jarrett, she made a motion to approve the appointees that apply for the position, I second it. Questions or comments on the floor? Uh, let's go by the name of the individuals that have been, that we recommended to be appointed or we approved them to be appointed. Uh, one seems to be Mr. Alex Bronson. Second individual is Ms. Diane Kish. And third individual who we think quite well from doing this position is James Kokas. Those are the three individuals that we are recommending or voting to appoint to the cable commission. So, any other questions or comments about the motion on the floor? Last month or last meeting, we had a discussion about this and we had to go through the correct channels, which they have done. They went through the city, the city brought it, we got the paperwork here, so everything's in order. If there's no questions or comments, it's call the roll.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carry. Item eleven, adopt the MHSAA Annual Membership Resolution.
So, move.
Send second. Any questions or comments about this? No?
What are these for?
This is an annual, um, this is an annual, um, membership that each district in the state of Michigan pays to the Michigan High School Athletic Association, um, and it's just part of, uh, the, uh, membership resolution.
Yep. Just be to, be play, be a part of the team, play the game. Are there any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carry. Information items. Item number twelve, Bay Financial Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Yes, these are the financials that, um, we talked about in the finance committee. Um, this is the regular, uh, monthly business of the district. Year to date, uh, in the general fund, we have, uh, collected eleven point one million dollars, and at this time, we've spent just under, uh, eleven million, we're, um, right at eleven million dollars. So, our spending is staying within our means. Uh, so, we, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the good, um, as far as that goes, uh, from operations. You have the cash flow report before you, and at the end of May, um, still in the bank, we had two hundred and, um, almost twenty-five, um, thousand dollars in the bank, so our cash flow is decent at this time. You also have a report, um, for the operations from our grant funding, um, that would be state and federal grants. And as always, our revenue is a little behind our expenditures because we have to spend it and then we request, uh, the, uh, reimbursement from, uh, for each of those grants. Also with the special revenues, and that is our, um, food service, we have spent seven, almost seven hundred sixty-one thousand, I mean, collected seven hundred sixty-one thousand, and again, we spend and then collect, and we have, um, spent almost eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So, we've used about fifty-eight thousand dollars of fund equity, but we're still in good shape on that, and we will collect all of the funds, um, by August. With the debt service, um, we have, um, collected thirteen million dollars, and we've spent, um, meeting our obligation, a little over three, thirteen point, um, three or thirteen point four million. So, we had, did use about, uh, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of fund equity. Uh, but again, we are still in the black in our debt funding. And we did, um, like I said, we talked about our financials at, um, our business meeting. You also have a report, um, for, it's called the EDEP, and that's the Enhanced Deficit Elimination Plan. And since we are a deficit, uh, deficit district, we still are required to report to the state. And these are the same numbers, but the, the treasury requires it in a different format. So, our financials are the exact same, that, uh, that's reported in the EDEP, but in the state's format. And, and that is it.
So, we're definitely on budget?
Yes, we are on target, yes.
Did you find anything on that, um, budget, was there something wrong with the improvement? I'm pretty sure you did, you talked about the business meeting, huh?
Well, our improvement is to make sure that we stay within the guidelines of the, um, appropriated funds and to make sure that we do not overspend the amount of money that we have available. And we have been diligently doing that, um, for the past years, that's why, um, we're looking forward to-
Being in the black.
After so many years.
It's amazing what happened when you plan, huh?
Amazing.
As the eighteen would say, Colonel Hannibal, I love it when a plan comes together.
All right.
All right. Information item number thirteen, Madam Superintendent?
Okay. And these are open purchase orders, again, we did discuss these at our finance meeting, committee meeting, and everything, this is just a normal business, so everything is in order. If any of the committee members would like to add anything.
No.
Or if the board, other board members have any questions.
Mr. Monk, got anything? Ms. Jarrett, questions? Okay. Ms. Escalante, you good?
I'm good.
All right. All right, let's move on then. Let's go on to, um, hey, Ms. Walker didn't call you because you're in the business committee.
I'm good.
Let's move on to, um, item fourteen, contract listing.
Okay. Again, um, these are reports that we give you guys on a monthly basis, uh, with the contracts, as well as, um, claims details and workers' comp information. There are no changes since the last, um, meeting, uh, in May, I mean, I'm sorry, in, yeah, in May. So, um, there are no updates at this time, but as the months go on, we will make some updates. It's the same report that you got last month, as well as the, um, claims report. And again, we did discuss these in finance, uh, committee.
Okay. How do you do with snow removal issue, do okay?
Yes, Robert, uh, we are collecting that information, and as soon as we do finish that, um, and we did, uh, briefly talk about that in finance, uh, but yes, we are, uh, putting that together. It wasn't so much the snow this time, it was the salt because we had more ice, um-
Yeah.
-this year because of the, um, bone chill and cold. So, it almost ends up being about the same as if we did have the, um, snow push.
Okay. Just thought I asked. All right, anybody else have anything to say? No? Okay. Item fifteen, Superintendent comments?
Okay, thank you. Again, well, I just wanna, um, make sure that, um, this community, and especially our staff, um, know that we do appreciate, um, what they do. There are times where I address the community, and there are times when I address the, um, staff. And we do try to make sure that our staff, that if there's ever any misunderstanding or anything, I would like for them to come and let me know. But again, we do, I do appreciate the staff, I know the heartaches and the headaches that they've gone through, and even being patient with administration, um, because through no fault of their own, being in the classroom, doing what they need to do. Um, because through no fault of their own, being in the classroom, doing what they need to do, um, things happen. And ultimately, everyone ends up paying for it. So we are working diligently to try to get ourselves out of that position to make sure that this is a district that everyone wants to come to. And, um, and I know our teachers are working until that end. And we recognize that. And that's why we don't have a lot to give them, but when we do have an opportunity to, um, honor them, uh, we celebrate them with, um, tokens of appreciation and recognizing them and, and trying to give away, um, gift items, just to let them know, yeah, we're not a district that, um, can do all of the things that, uh, some districts do. But to say, yes, we appreciate you. We know that you're working hard. And we recognize that. And we, um, are thankful that you are being patient with us as we go through these changes. And I will be communicating with staff throughout the, um, summer. Uh, we have a lot of things on the horizon. There are interviews that some staff members will be taking part of, uh, so that they will have some say in the destiny of this district. And we want them to know that we are including them because they should be a part of, uh, the decision making and at least have a voice. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we did have staff, um, participating in the interview process. So as, uh, that comes together, I will be sharing that information, um, with staff. Also, I want to say congratulations to our graduates. It was a wonderful, um, ceremony, if you will, uh, graduation ex- exercise. And the, um, students, um, showed up in grand, um, in grand fashion, as did the parents. Um, uh, we were so proud of the parents and the students, but it was the students and the teachers that did all of the work. And so thank you, um, to each of the staff members that, which would be, um, pre-K through, uh, twelfth grade that had some part in the students', um, life here at, um, Mount Clemens. And I'm thankful that those students stayed true to Mount Clemens. And that just goes to prove, once obeyed, they're always obeyed. So those students, um, stayed here because they love this district and they, um, appreciate and want to make a difference, um, in this school. So I am very thankful for that ceremony, all of the staff, again, that participated in that and everyone that came out, uh, the community. It, it was a beautiful ceremony. This is the first time we had it across the street and it, it was a good place to be. And, um, and so thank you so much to the staff, uh, at the church that they, uh, opened their doors and allowed the students to come over there as they wanted, um, to have it over there. So they opened their doors. So we're, um, experiencing a great partnership with, um, the church. And I just want to say thank you, uh, to the administration over there. And we will have, um, summer school starting next week and we're excited about that. Uh, we will have the, um, it would take place over here at the secondary complex. So thank you to Ms. Mary Campbell for, um, being, um, the administrator on staff for, uh, summer school. And we're excited about that. We'll also have meetup and eat up here. We will have three locations, but definitely here at the high school secondary complex. So all, um, students up to age, um, nineteen, um, please, we will have, um, wonderful meals again this year. So, and maybe even more exciting meals because we're going to add healthier items to the, uh, menu. So we will be having that starting next week. So it's breakfast and lunch, um, for that. Uh, let's see, is there anything else? Oh, we did have the, um, field day here at the secondary complex. And also we had field day over at the elementary complex. And that was a lot of fun. The kids had so much fun coming out. We had all kinds of games and food and activities, um, for the students. And the, um, parents did come out for that, some of the parents did. So thank you to, for, uh, to all of you for participating in, um, those activities. We also had a welcome, um, for the incoming sixth graders last Thursday, I believe. When was the other Thursday? I get my days mixed up. But that was very well attended. Uh, the students and parents came out to participate in that and they were very thankful that that was the second year, uh, that we had done that. So we plan to do that every year, inviting the incoming sixth graders and their families over, um, to, um, see the building, meet some of the teachers and just enjoy a meal together. And, um, so thank you so much for participating in that venture. And like I had mentioned before, we will have, um, we're, we'll be doing interviews over the summer, um, to, um, hire staff, uh, for the district. And the teachers that are participating in that, thank you again for your participation. You will hear more of that. And we will have the back to school bash in August with their planning, um, making plans for that. And just wishing all of the students a happy summer, a safe summer. Take your time out there, have fun, but be safe and, um, and enjoy because September's going to be here before you know it. And we just thank you, um, for a successful school year. And thanks to this board for, um, being patient and all of the things that we've had to deal with over the, um, this past year. Uh, we had a lot on our plate, but we made it through it. And this district can't do anything without your support. So thanks, uh, so much to you for the hard work and need people to understand. You put in a lot of hours, uh, getting prepared for these meetings and all of the homework that you have to do. And you are not paid for this. It's not a paid position, um, but you still diligently work, um, well and do what you need to do, your due diligence, to be prepared to make the tough decisions that you have to. So thank you so much for, um, this past year and the, um, challenges that we had, but we made it through. So thank you. And those are my comments.
Okay. This portion may even go to item number sixteen, but I'm, I'm right now torn between making amendment to this, um, to the agenda and move the board comments before item seventeen. We're going to go with, um, the current committee reports. And once we get to the end of that, we'll see how we go with this, um, if we want to go that way or not. So let's start off with item number sixteen, committee reports, business committee.
Well, we met last Tuesday morning and we went over all the reports that were, um, presented tonight and we found everything to be in wonderful order.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Policy. Mr. Monk.
We, as a policy committee, met with Representative, uh, Niola and policies will be forth, will be forthcoming. Um, I do have, um, there has been a issue brought to this body of the board that in our policy has to be addressed. Whenever we have an employee come to us as a board, um, and it was the, during the citizen comment of the, um, union representative, that we must take action on that. So we must do an investigation on whatever happened or didn't happen. And we should, as a board, um, ask our, both of our CO officers to investigate because that's what the policy states. And bring a report to this board as far as what happened.
Madam Superintendent, do you know what he's talking about, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for the policy chair? Community coalition.
Coalition did not meet last month. We will be meeting next Wednesday in this room at ten, ten AM.
Thank you. Legislation. Mister, um, uh, Mr. Rick was not here right now, so we can't speak upon legislation because I don't know anything about it. Curriculum personnel, Ms. Walker.
Well, look at me. I did not make that meeting last.
You didn't?
No.
And we did, we met and we, um, talked about, um, mostly going over, um, personnel for next year and looking at the budget and what, um, some possibilities of things that we would be, um, expecting, uh, with the new, um, staffing. And what was the last? It was one other thing. But that was the gist of it, just looking at, um...
I do know that for the curriculum committee, there was a, um, communication sent from the last board meeting in reference to a motion, a proposed motion that we brought up on the floor. Um, I know everybody received it and I'm glad for not too many being chatterboxes because I don't like chatterboxes with a sign of email communication. Did they discuss this motion at the last curriculum meeting?
Uh, uh, which one?
The one that stated the L con motion. All concerned. We'll read it again. I shall read it. Last, to, uh, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, the committee moved to have the superintendent report on a monthly basis in individual data study comparison of student, student letter grades that students earned in math, English, social studies and science.
Yes, we did talk about that.
Okay. I'm going to continue reading it to include any other core content courses not mentioned comparing these grades earned with individual student competency scores found in the state testing models. Example, NWA, MBAP, ACT, SAT, or what so be the current state testing model. The superintendent will have all grade levels from K through six, the middle school and the high school report to include a data comparison of classroom performance. The data will protect student and teacher confidentiality. The data will start from accumulating past available data of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And then our discussion is the purpose of this motion is to, is to let a grade of classroom grading tools earned by the student given by the teacher reflect the competency scores achieved by his student performance and identify, uh, district weaknesses and student achievements. So...
That was the thing I could...
It was long, I mean, you couldn't repeat it all.
Right, but that is what, um, we talked about and, and that, um, we will be compiling all of that stuff this summer to make sure, because all of the grades aren't in just yet and we want to make sure that, uh, we had a complete, uh, report to give.
I understand that motion wasn't really passed or, uh...
No, it was just...
Motion is second, but it was discussed and Mr. Monk had a question.
I have a lot of questions.
I know you do, sir. It's a long, long email.
I have a bunch of questions. One...
Let me get my pen and paper. All right.
What of the districts have done this? Two. What criteria is going to be used for this? Three. Is it? I'm not understanding what this is for and we talked about that. If we're trying to see how a child takes a test and how they are in the classroom, then you have to look at every single parameter that's within that. And I'll make my statements that I made before. Did the kid get enough sleep? Did the kid eat? Did the parent make him upset before they came to school? We're trying to compare grades from a state test where state don't even know what they want. Compared to what that same student grade is in the classroom? I've never seen this and trust me, I've been looking for it. I've never seen it, I've never heard of it. Now, I'm all for us figuring out how better we're going to teach our students. Right now, we don't even have a curriculum. So what is we basing all this off of? And then this information, what are we using it for?
Can you go back to three again? What was your question on three? Because I got one and two. Three was, was the parameters based off of or what was that question?
Was it based off of, um...
Because you went right to the example.
Yeah, I just went right in. Um... Where, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm trying to figure out this whole conversation because I'm not there. But what are we trying to do? Because it's not laid out. And then if we got, if we get this information, what are we going to do with it? What are we, what are we determining? Do anybody know?
Hold up.
It was my understanding, um, that the purpose of knowing, of comparing a grade in the classroom and comparing what, um, is being, or how they are testing on a state test to see if there's any disconnect or if it's the same, if the performance is the same. Uh, if they are getting an A in the class, are they getting an A on that state test?
Yeah. It's, it's data collection. Hold up, it's data collection and it's, it's not to, uh, penalize or focus saying the teacher's not doing the job. That's the first thing.
I'm going to be honest with you, that's exactly what I'm thinking what it is.
Right. It's not meant for that. It's data collection because we want to find out where the growths or the, or the non-growth.
What criteria of, what criteria is it based off of? What are you going to use to, to base that off of? You just can't say, okay, child got this grade on this state test, child getting this grade in this classroom. There's a lot of other variables in there that you got to look at. Are they special needs? Are they special ed? Are they high risk? Are we, and then now I'm going to go to the back for the superintendent right, right now. She got enough things on her plate, so you're going to tell me she's need, she, we want her to put together this report amongst all the other stuff that she's doing? And what are we going to do with that information?
I think the collections is coming from the curriculum.
No, this state, this is superintendent.
Well, she's the leader of it.
But she's going to be responsible. She's, she's, she's going to be responsible for giving the report.
She's, she has minions to do some of this.
You know what? That's what I've been getting. Every time we all, all, I've had all y'all say, at any given time, she got enough on her plate. Am I right or wrong?
I get that.
And I'm seeing a bunch of yeses right now.
But I think the data collection is a good point because it's a starting point. I mean, you've seen what...
Start to what? You still didn't, start to what?
But we've seen what the state gives out and you're still asking questions of what's happening in the classroom? What's happening in the classroom? And I think Dr. McFadden was coming up with this.
How you figure out what's happening in the classroom is, is curriculum. We don't have a curriculum right now.
Exactly. And this discussion came up because of the curriculum. Because, um... Ms. Jensen. Ms. Jensen was going with the analysis of finding the curriculum and the question came up, how long will it take? She stated, if I'm correct, it will take December, to December, to figure out what curriculum that we want to get or need to get. Then from there, it'll take another school year to order the curriculum.
Okay.
Okay? That's, that's the first problem. The second problem was, okay, now, how many grade levels will be behind because we don't have a curriculum for a year and a half?
Right, right. I get all that.
That's the big problem.
I get all that, right.
So what, we came together, Mr. Brooly, Ms. Walker and myself, we came to the discussion of we need to figure out what areas the children are the most weak at. To figure that out, we need to get more data.
You figure it out from a state test? And what they do on the state test, what they do in the classroom?
Well, hear, hear me out.
Okay.
The state test is already showing across the board, it's not effective. To me, we not gathering much information from the state test.
I'm glad you said that. So why are we using data from a state's test if it's already shown that it's not effective?
Because the goal at the end of the day is to pass the state tests.
Now you're talking, now you're, now, now you're talking about an apple and an orange.
Well, they, they, they are, do different animals because the state don't know what they're doing.
Which brings me back. Now, I'm going to, I'm just, I'm just saying this one time.
Because the state don't know what they're doing, doesn't mean that we can't get a curriculum together to get these children to move forward.
I'm with you, Doc, I'm with you. This is what I have learned in my studying. Is this research-based? If it's not research-based, please, y'all, don't, let's not go down this rabbit hole. Is it research-based? That's why I ask you. Have other districts done this? And, and if they have, how many times have you said, what other districts out here doing the same thing? Let me see the data.
I say it all the time.
All right, then.
And that's a good question. And knew what we do, we'll take it back and forth, find that information. But because this, uh, district did, did not do something like this, there got to be something, some model that's close to doing this to figure out what's going on.
I'm all for, if you find some research-based, you got me on board.
But the first thing for research-based is data collection. If you don't have the data, you can do all the research you want.
So who's out there collecting this type of data in the state?
That's what we got to find out.
There it is.
Because the state ain't collecting the data. I mean, I just seen today, uh, funny, what, with thirty-seven out of fifty? I mean, don't, let's don't talk about any other performance in the state because the state is not doing us a favor.
Man, like I said at the last meeting, and I use my own son, all my own child as his example. He was great inside the classroom, but when he took a test, you sat him down and, and you put a seventy-five question test in front of him, he bombed it.
Test anxiety.
Some kids don't test well.
And, and it's, it's true. It's like, hey...
So how are we going to determine what kids are testing well and what kids are not testing well?
Exactly. Hey, I'm like a Missouri type of person. You can't tell me something, but show me. You can't tell me something, but show me. Okay, show me, I, I, I can get it. But when you tell me something, I can't communicate the words. But you put a picture in front of me, I got it. And it's, it's the same focus here. Because it's not that, here's the thing, our teachers are not ineffective. But we gotta get the tools for everybody to be effective. Because the students and the teachers, there's a disconnect. But the disconnect is not from both ends. The end, when you give a test that's only for one format that the state gives us, we gotta figure out what's going on.
Yeah, but we got based on our curriculum.
You know, that curriculum thing there, Mr. Monk, come on, come on. How long we been?
So what, so, so my, so my thing is, Doc, why not pick one or two and let's roll with it? Not, let's, let's not spread ourselves thin over six. Let's pick one or two and let's roll with it. Let's get, let's get our teachers involved, administrators involved, you know what I'm saying? With the superintendent, alright, which, which two we gonna focus in on? Right now, I think it's like, we're trying to.
Now, when you say two, you're talking about which state testing?
Yeah, what state, is it, is it, is it N W A, is it, I mean.
Good question. Two months ago, we talked about the two focus models we're gonna do for the state. Uh, one was N W A. Madam Superintendent, I'm correct about that one because I, Ms. Jensen's not here and I don't have my notes from that meeting. N W A is one for, believe, across the district.
Actually, Ms. Jensen should be here for this discussion.
She, she, yeah, yes, you're right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right. But N W A, and there was another model that was actually utilized. Ms. Jensen, believe, had a baby this recent, right?
Yeah, she just had a baby. This is on the, um, comments too, so there's nothing on the agenda but that, so.
We're not, it's not, it's just discussion. It's, we're not gonna take a vote on it because this is something that needs to.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I wanna have the discussion, because I wanna go have the discussion with email.
Thank you, sir.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, because, you know, that's out of order, we shouldn't be doing that in, um, email anyway.
Right.
So this is, this is the right form for the discussion.
Right.
And like I said, two, uh, two months ago, we did identify two models that's gonna be utilized for that. That is the curriculum director and the superintendent, and I believe somebody in the state came up with those models. Um, bottom line is, we just wanted to get another benchmark or data entry just to see where our kids, where we can make them bump up. And like I said before, with all the districts around, it gotta be somebody in the United States of America, if not somewhere in the world that's, that's identical to, to what we look like and are doing well.
Let's find a research-based data.
Yeah, it's, it gotta be out there.
Yeah.
But we don't know what we're gonna ask for in the research because you do research all day long, man, it, it's, you just be on there and just Googling. So we gotta find out what we looking for and be specific.
Maybe we need to reach out to the ISD, see if they know or not, reach out to the state.
But we all at this table is in the grants that curriculum.
Oh, yeah.
Is something we need help with.
Definitely, I'm, I'm one hundred percent aboard on that.
Right, curriculum we need help with. And, and like I said before, we got people in front of people, but if we don't give them the tools because we don't know what they need or they really can't, you know, they know how to do what they doing, but there's, there's lacking something there, we gotta figure out where, where's that lacking.
Remember, if you remember at the curriculum meeting, I asked that question. I said, what is, how is the P D? How effective is the P D? Are we using the correct P D?
Right, and that's a good question.
And Ms. Jensen couldn't answer nobody, I couldn't, we couldn't get an answer to that. And how effective is, how effective is that getting to the, to, to the teachers, to the classroom? And we need to see that, that data, we need to see what's going on.
But that data is like, okay, how, how are we gonna ask for that type of data? What, what data points are we asking for? I mean, we know the question, but that's, that's broad. It's like all over the place. They could say, well, we getting this P D, but, um, they're not getting it down here, so how are we gonna measure that? We, we gotta have something.
Yeah, I just think.
Yeah, because I, I.
Trying to, trying to figure out a grade on a state test and grade what you getting in the classroom. Like I said, I don't see any, I, show me some research-based.
But we do need data. We gotta figure it out.
Show me some research data.
I, my, for us being the board, we gotta make sure they got the tools to do what they need to do. And if, uh, some of the resources and they can bring to us the things they need and, you know, maybe there's something that we talk with other colleagues or other districts or ISD or whatever that we need to bring forward, but like I said, we don't know what to ask, we can be asking for the wrong thing. You know, we can be asking for hot sauce when we want ketchup. It's not gonna work.
Right. Like I say, especially in curriculum, it's gotta be research-based.
And we, middle cities have schools that represent, that probably mirror, you know, ours and our environment. We, that's another resource that we can look at, you know, find out what middle city schools are doing in terms of
Right.
Uh, those, those that mirror what, what, you know, our situation here.
Mm-hmm. Because it's not fair for us to say that, um, our performance is terrible, but we want to blame up here and up there. It's, it's something in between there that's causing that to happen. You know, there's something that somebody's not getting. Is, it could be they not getting the resources or the resource not getting down, there's something there. But see, that's the gray area, we don't know what it is. And as long as we keep trying to chase, you know, chase that dog tail, we ain't gonna never catch it.
I'm gonna say this one more time and then y'all, I've said it since I've been on this board. One of the foundations that we need to do as a board going forward to, um, direct the superintendent to do is that I personally feel, and maybe some of y'all feel the same way, that we need more social workers. Y'all, we have eighty-four percent high-risk students, the highest in the county. We need more social workers. We need more social workers. We need more social workers and we have not addressed that yet. We've put Band-Aids, we've brought people in who mimic social work, but they wasn't social workers. We need more social workers to deal with the type of students that we have. No one else in this county has the students that we have. And I think we have some very unique students and I'm proud of these students, they're unique. But we need to put resources towards dealing with our unique students.
And that's probably is the disconnect. But you know, even from the trenches, you know, sometimes at the curriculum, I, I'm, I'm gonna wanna, I, I know we talking about curriculum. Maybe you hear, hear from the ground up, you know, like what instructors might need because we hear from the curriculum director, you might hear from the principal and stuff, you won't hear a whole lot from the teachers' comments, like, you know, maybe this will help this class with this. I, I've been over to Seminole and, you know, I've been both, both campuses and they do have a, a lot on their plate, you know, other than just instructing. So that could be the disconnect. But like I said, we don't know, either somebody not telling us, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
I get it.
Or we not getting the information where.
From the ground up, right.
Yeah, the information not getting all the way through, it's, it's the Great Bond Effect.
I know.
Time gets me, it's garbage, I can't hear it.
I know when I do my tours over at Seminole and I like going over to Seminole because that's where most of our kids are at. Pretty much every teacher over there that's in them pods say, we need a social worker over here full-time, all day, every day.
And when you say social work.
Ms. Monk is not enough.
We're talking about, we're not talking about security, we're talking about social.
Yeah, we got security over there doing, you know what I'm saying? We got these people doing, but it's putting Band-Aids on stuff. That's all it is, we putting Band-Aids on stuff. If we're gonna fix this curriculum, let's get to the heart of what's going on. Let's attack it. As a board, let's attack it.
And that's, that's the goal. I like you, I like what you said, but we gotta know what we fighting. You know, we gotta know who the enemy is. So we gotta get some information from somewhere.
You know what I suggest? I'll suggest bring Ms. Monk in and have her do a presentation. Have her tell the board exactly what's going on, so we all know. I'll suggest that.
That, that's, that's one data point, uh, Ms. Monk. And I think she's the only source.
You know, I know Mr. Raziak is, is leaving. Have Mr. Raziak come in and do a presentation too. He's a psychologist. Got a new psychologist coming in to the district, I mean, Mr. Raziak, that's a lot of years. That's a lot of years dealing with a lot of families, dealing with a lot of kids. He, I mean, we gotta need, we need to talk to them, you know what I'm saying? How is it? Because obviously it's not getting up to us.
Yeah, so bottom line is, with curriculum, we need more information.
Yep.
We looking at a new curriculum and we, like I said, it's gonna take about a year, year and a half to get this thing on the ground. But what about this year's students or next year's students? That's, like I said before, that's two generations.
Right.
And we gotta figure that one out, so.
Like I said, I think we just need to zero in on, until we get this new curriculum that we're gonna develop in a year, let's focus in on one or two that we got right now. Start to focus in on three, four, five or this, no, focus in on two. Let's zero it in, you know what I'm saying?
When you say two, you mean like the.
Two or one, whatever we doing, because I know we hit math as over there, then we hit E L A. You know what I'm saying? Obviously, that didn't work, you know?
And you know, when you do a curriculum and you got the, the instructors going from, okay, we doing this one this, this quarter, okay, we doing this one this quarter, I understand it. But like I said, the more information we get, the more data we have and, and maybe it just, it's simple, somebody slipping a note, going up to the top, you know, as long as we know something, we know where to, where to fight the battle at.
Alright.
Okay, but that's why this came about. And because we're, we're all confused and bumfounded, we sitting there like, you know, what's going on? How, how come we can't get better? And it's, and it been not more than just one year or two year, it been four, five, six, almost ten years.
Right, right.
So that's why we got a fifteen, fifteen, eight, one, you know? Since he been on the board, so it's been a long time. So we gotta try to figure out why.
Okay.
And, and, and any resource of data, that's fine. And I, I don't think anyway they get slapped on the wrist or slapped on the hand for saying something is wrong. I hope that's not the case, I'm pretty sure isn't. So if we get information, then we know what we need to do. Because as a board, we, we're ineffective if that's not happening. If academically we, we terrible, we're ineffective. What, what we doing? So anyway, that's it, that's it on the curriculum thing. Um, Ms., Ms. Davis, thank you for following through on that. Mr. Rickman, welcome to the board meeting, you can take over.
Oh, yeah, you, you go ahead.
Alright. Alright, athletics, as we all know, there was no meeting last week in athletics.
It was.
No, sir, it wasn't. But, um, we did pretty good in athletics, I guess, I'll be doing what we can, you know, move forward in that so I'm getting more information on curriculum because I wasn't there for athletics. Um, Ms. Davis, is there anything new with athletics and curriculum? I mean, personnel?
Um, no, the, uh, coaches will be, uh, utilizing the gym this summer, doing their normal training and, um, the ones that are able to train, so, and they'll start that schedule next week.
Okay.
I, I think there needs to be a meeting to determine what we're gonna offer next year. We need to look at the sports that we had, the, the number of participants, um, and, and, and see what we're gonna project for, you know, this coming year. Because I'm just using football because that's the first, first sport. If we only got ten kids, we can't go down that road. I know we got into a league and, um, there's, there are more schools that are, that are like ours, they got seventeen kids. Well, if you got seventeen kids, I got seventeen, neither one of us has a full football squad, but we got enough to compete.
Right.
But you come out there with ten kids, twelve kids, I mean, we're already, as we, uh, particularly in football, we're already underneath the, the levels that we stated this board years ago stated was a, a level that we would, we, that we had to have participation in order to have that, that, offer that activity. I think football was like twenty fi, twenty or twenty-five because you play eleven on the field at a time. If you got twelve kids, thirteen kids, you got eight kids that are playing all the time. Everybody's playing both ways and there's some kids that don't only need to field for one or two plays and that's not safe. Um, so we, we need to have a meeting to look at where we are and what we're, you know, what these coaches think they're gonna have coming up next year. And if we're keeping the coaches, um, there should have been the evaluation done by the, by the exact athletic director given to the superintendent on, on, on the coaches. Each season, there should be an evaluation of those coaches.
You know, speaking of that, it's, because I remember we had a situation, I don't know if you remember Earl, back when I was coaching girls' basketball, we actually, um, entertained a student that was at a neighboring school. I forget what school it was, but they didn't have a girls' basketball team. And we actually went to the state and the state said yes because they didn't offer a girls' basketball team. She was eligible to come play with us. She didn't come play with us, but we, we checked on that.
Sort of like homeschooling.
Yeah.
Homeschooling.
Right, so what Earl said, I believe, you know, if we call Michigan High School Athletic Association, there is a parameter in there if, you know, you have two neighboring schools that don't have enough to put a team, they could combine, they probably can't be in a league, but be in the independent league, but they combine and have one team, so that's something, yeah.
It does, it just boosts their, um, their size level. So if you're a D-one school or say you're two D-twos, they take the total population, I believe, and put them together.
Is that what it is, okay.
But we have to double check that because it can change, that's the last time I talked. Madam Superintendent, these are very good points and factors, speaking of motions, is there anything? How long, how much time you need before we can have a meeting on that? Because that's the information that gotta be gathered.
I, I'm not sure how long that would take, but, um, I'll make it a goal for, uh, maybe the next workshop. See if I can get enough information together by then.
How much can, how much information can you get together by next week?
By next week, not.
Athletic thing. Athletics.
Probably not because we're moving to school just right out and people are on vacation, so I'm looking.
Athletic can, athletic can direct and contact Michigan, M S H A A and get all the, uh, parameters and criteria.
Well, I mean, if, if, and I, and I wasn't, I didn't use football as an example to, and I, the numbers to merge with anybody. Um, that, that's already out there, if you don't have enough students to participate at your school, you can go to a neighboring school. So we already know that's, that's out there. I, I, I'm not suggesting that, 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 that's what we do. But we need to know, you know, what we're gonna look like projecting because a coach should know how many kids, you know, are coming back next year, or how many kids he's got coming up, you know, through, so he should have an idea. I won't say he should know, but there should be some kind of idea of who you anticipate coming back.
Yeah, he should have, yeah, you're right, Earl, he should have one, summer workouts, two, seven-on-seven. Based on that, you should have a real good idea of how many kids you gonna have.
Okay, but it definitely be a discussion athletics. I mean, it's, it's long what we do, we need to find out what's going on for the next coming year. Um, what plans, what we gonna look like, that type of situation. Um, Madam Superintendent, is there any, well, no, it wouldn't work that way. I was gonna say, put it along with personnel, but no, it'd need a separate meeting. Just let me know about a couple weeks, hopefully before the holidays, you know? And that's not, not enough time, just let me know, okay?
Okay, I'll get it.
Get out there. Alright.
Because there was some in the budget dealing with athletics. Um, and that controls one aspect of it, the budget to portions of it, but you gotta have participants. So, you know, that, you know, all that, you know, goes in together.
Yeah, we got that, then you gotta get re, then you put in reconditioning, helmets.
All of that, yeah.
All of that.
Yeah.
Because that's a big thing, if the budget, if you commit to do that and you're getting it done, then that's lost money if you're not utilizing it.
Big thing, yeah.
Not saying we trying to get rid of football or anything, but we're just thinking of the pros and cons of operations. Alright, anything else athletics?
You decide.
I don't know, anything else? Any questions? Ms. Escalante, I know you got a question.
I don't, I'm just taking it all in.
It's my cheerleader, I like that. Um, education foundation.
We have not had a meeting, uh, prior to the graduation and we have not had one since the conclusion of the graduation, but, uh, I, I will get the number of applicant students graduating seniors that actually, uh, apply for the, the scholarship and we'll report that out, uh, as soon as I get that information from, from the committee. And what the, uh, thoughts are going forward. I know, um, last year, there were fundraising activities that never materialized. So every time we have a round of graduates and we don't have a fundraiser, um, that decreases the, the, the amount of money in, in the, in the, in the pot. So, uh, hopefully I, I can by the next meeting have a report on what, what's in the pool of money, what's the thoughts of the, uh, bound, uh, Education Commitment Foundation moving forward.
Anybody else, any other questions? Alright, this, uh, item seventeen is gonna be moving into executive session, so we're gonna have to take a motion.
I'm moving that we go into executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privileged information.
Support. Seeing there being a motion and it been a second, is there any questions or comments about that motion? Seeing there being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rickman?
Sure, your voice is deep as mine, yes.
Mr. Rickman? Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion. Motion carry, we're moving to executive session at seven fifty-eight P M.
And we will come back out if there's any decisions that need to be made uh from the contents of the executive session, we'll come back out and make that decision in order to meet. The chair would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So, support.
Moved by Mr. Monk, seconded by Dr. McFadden to come out of executive session. Any questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries, meeting is now in regular session at eight twenty-nine P.M. Are there any more, any business to come before the board, before we move on the agenda?
I like, go right ahead, Ms. Jarrett, ladies first.
No, actually, you have the wording.
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. President, to move on the contract as discussed in executive session. The lease, to move on the contract of the lease.
It was uh moved by Dr. McFadden to proceed with the agreed-upon lease and to execute said said lease. Second, Mr. Monk. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? And the motion on the floor is to approve the uh the con, the lease and to execute it. Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, uh board comments. I will start to my right, Mrs. Jarrett.
Well, um, I wanted to congratulate the uh graduating uh seniors. I know they're probably out doing all their stuff for um the uh their summer. I'd like to also um say, move forward with purpose and be bold. The um uh for the uh the student body, the teachers, uh the faculty, I wish you a great summer, and I hope you enjoy any vacations that you're going to be taking, be safe, and uh come back in the coming year. I'm looking forward to seeing that. I think that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mrs. Jarrett. Mr. Monk?
Everyone have a great summer.
Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Mrs. Escalante?
Congratulations to the graduates of two thousand nineteen. I also wanna congratulate the fifth graders that graduated from Seminole, that'll be moving on to middle school, and the kindergartners who completed their very first year of school, and are now moving on to be first graders. Um, be safe, don't drive your parents too crazy. Uh, teachers and staff have a beautiful summer, I hope you get lots of rest and relaxation, you deserve it, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Escalante.
You are welcome.
Mrs. Walker?
Well, I too would like to congratulate the graduating class, and as I was sitting here, little math here, seventy-five years ago, my father graduated from Mount Clemens, fifty years ago, my sister did, my oldest son did sixteen years ago, and my second oldest son eleven years ago. And I do believe my Aunt Dorothy was eighty years ago, I think she was five years old older than my dad. All graduates of this school, so it is, it was so nice to see the graduating class in such a tradition that I could see my own family for just generations, it was a beautiful thing. So again, congratulations, and it's nice to be out of debt. Like, eh, there's no words, so, you know, that that is just a great way to move forward with the new school year. So, to our students, have a wonderful summer, make great memories, make good choices. And to the teachers, I saw that on Facebook, it's not vacation, it's like recuperation or something. So recuperate, and we will see you in the fall.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
It's amazing, Ms. Walker said her dad, her aunt, her.
She didn't say her, huh?
I know, yeah, 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 she did too, right?
No, my parents got divorced, so I moved.
Oh, okay, I knew it was some reason.
But that's okay, because you got um, your Soleil graduate this year too, so you're good.
Yes, oh, my Soleil.
Your Soleil.
Yes.
I I have it. No, I'm proud of my daughter, and I thought the graduation ceremony was awesome, it was good, it was well-attended. Uh, we did well, uh our students are doing well, I'm proud of them. Uh, now, on on that note, I'm proud of this board, and I'm looking forward to next year. I mean, we doing what we need to do, we doing financials, and now I know with the help of um the wisdom at this table, with Mr. Monk, all the way around to Ms. Garrett, we're gonna do well on academics, so I'm looking forward to a prosperous year. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Congratulations to the class of twenty nineteen. Um, it's the first graduation I've missed as a seated board member. Um, fortunately, I couldn't get my schedule to be back in time uh for the graduation, and I missed that. Uh, that that's one of the highlights for me serving on the board is to watch the young people walk across that stage as successful graduates uh of the Mount Clemens Community School District, so congratulations uh to the class of twenty nineteen. It has been, I can't even count the number of years it's been that we have not, I have not experienced this district being in a deficit. And um, I don't know if we gonna know how to act. We're we're used to doing so much with very little or nothing. Um, we ha, we have a little bit, or we don't have a lot, we've we've got a little bit, but it it shows um that we put a plan together, and regardless of how we felt about that plan, that we stuck to that plan. If if you read the news across the state, there are school districts that are in deficit. They have low test scores, uh similar to us. Uh, and they're are being challenged by the state to being to being taken over, shut down, converted to charter schools. Uh, that was us five years ago. We were on that hit list, uh potential schools to be merged, closed down, or charterized. Um, we, again, we we put together a plan, a comprehensive plan, um, and we stuck to that plan. And so then now we're out of deficit on paper, and that's where it starts on paper, and it's a great position to be in, and now that's a building block that we build upon a- as we move forward. So I I I say congratulations uh to the superintendent and and her and her team. You were here five years ago, uh then we first put the plan together, or it might have been six years ago, we first put the plan together, uh as the financial person, and you kept us focused on on that financial uh target. Uh, and when we've moved you into the capacity of the superintendent, you still kept your eye on that prize and that goal. And uh kudos and congratulations to you and your staff for uh keeping us in that direction, because uh there are times off time that we needed to do something, and we wanted to take some money to do that, what we needed, but no, we need to stick to this plan. We'll get through that, we need to stick to this plan, and so, thank you so much for you for you and your staff, you deserve a yeoman's, uh congratulations for for the job you've done over the last five or six years and and leading us uh down this direction to today where we are no longer in in deficit, so. And that that that's, that says, speaks volume of this board also, because there are many times that as a board, we wanted to do some things in the district, but we had to believe in the process and stay focused on the goal, and the goal was to come out of the deficit. Um, and kuda, I mean, the state should be running, giving us a party uh for doing it, because we're one of the few that that have successfully done it. Um, and and we should be used as an example of how we do it, uh because they sure used us as example when we were in a deficit. Uh, but I don't expect that that to happen, but we here know, we know what we've done over the past five or six years to get us to where we are now, and where we uh contend what we wanna do moving forward. To our students, uh those, if you are graduate, that graduated, hopefully, this was the be, the end of the beginning, and not the end, the beginning of an end, uh whether you go to community college, four-year college, or you go to work, you go to military services, um, take take the opportunity to to explore. Uh, Mount Clemens is gonna be here. I used to tell people, get a, get a to, get a round-trip ticket somewhere to see what some other people do some other part of the country, cuz Mount Clemens is gonna be here. Um, you should avail yourself to all opportunities that that can be placed in front of you, so. Uh, take take some risks, you know, go somewhere and see something different. Um, enjoy your summer, uh if you're going to college, you know, the time is gonna be short uh between the end of graduating high school and the time that you become an adult, and you go off to college by yourself, and you don't have anybody to make sure you're in the house at eleven o'clock, and you have to make decisions on your own. It it's gonna be a challenging new arena in in your lives, and um I I believe you'll you'll stand steady to the task and and do the right things. To our staff, and you know, somebody said it's a recovery period, so I'm saying it's a vacation. I always say, hey, get a get a convertible, let let the top down. In Michigan, I don't know yet, because the weather hasn't been really top-down weather. Um, but let the let the breeze blow through your hair, you know, enjoy life, you know, take some, well, Patrick, I'm sorry, you know. Your beard, that's hair. But enjoy it, you know, enjoy it, because um this time goes so quickly. Uh, here it is, the, we're in the middle of June, and next thing I'll be knowing, I'll be saying, hey, it's it's September, we're right back in school again, so en- enjoy your time away. Um, if you can't stay away, come up and, you know, help us out. Um, and we we look forward to uh seeing all these bright shiny faces, fired up and ready to go for beginning of a new school year uh at the end of August or the beginning of September. Uh, those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn, to adjourn.
I make a motion?
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries, meeting's adjourned at eight forty-one in the P.M. Thank you, Dr. McFadden.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.